Welcome, everybody, to the regular meeting for the Board of Trustees for Tuesday, May 23rd, 2023. Is there a motion to open the meeting? Trustee Taylor, second trustee Sullivan, all in favor. Meeting is hereby open. Could you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice as our own.
Earlier today, we had a workshop, and unfortunately, we're only able to get to, I believe, two of those items. So we're going to roll over some of those items into the agenda for the regular Board of Trustee meeting. So the first item that was, we have to address, is the youth football lights at Gould Park. I think we have a memo with pictures from Kendra. Is that correct, Kendra? Can you, do you want to come up and talk about it a little bit? I know you don't want to come up and talk about it, but would you come up and talk about it?
I definitely don't, but I have people here from Youth Football League, so they can come up and kind of explain everything.
Okay. Pick someone. So I think we've all seen this, I think we've seen the slides.
Okay.
Yes.
How do you hear? Very good. Okay. So my name's Stephen O'Leary, and I've been involved in youth athletics here for about 12 years. I'm involved with the, I'm sorry, youth football program as well as varsity program. Our proposal this evening is to basically affix modern lights to the three poles that are in Gould Park. They are, step up from the lights that are being rented over the past several years. These would be event-based lights. They would not be on all the time for any scheduled events. They would have a lockbox that would be charged up for that period of time for that event and be shut off. There's a significant amount of money that's being raised each year for the past decade or so for lights, for the events, for the varsity, generally two games. The youth piggybacks on those two games does a Saturday, and then we also split the cost with our soccer partners and make night games. So it's one spend for three organizations. We split the money. The money is funded by donations and money's raised at the games, and people provide funding to both the organizations and the Gould Club. Generally, it's between $4,000 and $6,000 a year. So the thought is to buy, which we've bought some already of these lights, affix them to the infrastructure in Gould Park. It would offset the recurring costs. The lights are, do not generate noise. They're more powerful. We talked earlier about the lights. Lumen is the measurement for lights. They have 140,000 lumen, which is significantly greater than the ones that we rent. They're targeted. They're fixed on the field. They would not bleed over as much to the neighborhood. They would not require diesel generators, which are also loud and obviously have the exhaust issues. So we have purchased some of these. The light showed some of our use of the lights. There were recently, one of the lights we purchased were used on a temporary basis for our Little League evening to help supplement that. So they're powerful, and they would be part of the Gould infrastructure, where not only football, but baseball, soccer, any other events that would want to use them at night could use them. They use regular 110 electric, and that could be either from the park or from a very small generator and not a generator that is diesel. So that's it, basically, in a nutshell. We would pay for the lights. We'd pay for the installation with licensed electricians. So we would love to do this for the park, and then it becomes a permanent part of the park.
So thank you for that. I think one of the concerns was the fact that they wouldn't have those diesel, those diesel noises going on. So, I mean, that's, I think that will be a major improvement for the experience of people who live in the neighborhood. Any questions or comments?
Yeah, are these dark sky compliant?
Yes. Yes, they are.
Are you illuminating all from one side, or are there lights, are you going to do lights on Washington's side also? Get the whole field from this, just because from photos, I'm looking at three poles.
Leveraging the existing infrastructure and not looking to remediate the field, we would use those lights and probably have to supplement instead of purchasing 10 rental lights. We would do two for the game event. So we would cut down significantly. They would, as we estimated, provide about 70% of the light usually used for an event. We would have to supplement that, but that'd be significantly less money, and that would be on the Washington side.
Okay, so you still need a couple, three, on the, on the other side?
Unless you want to put up a telephone pole on the other side, we can.
Well, no, I'm just trying to, it's a great idea. It's exactly what should have been done a long time ago, and I'm glad you guys bring it here. I'm just trying to figure out a comprehensive solution. So you, you know, maybe you come back in a couple of years with another, you know, the other lights. But just, I'm just curious.
I mean, we, we're using the lights. They're part of the park. They're not part of Con Ed or any of the carriers, so it's not on the street. Because the lights are focused and fixed, they can't be that far away from the field. We tested them out in Springhurst, and two of the lights in Springhurst would allow for night lacrosse games, soccer games there as well. So it's really a proof of concept, and if it goes well, then we can expand it to other parks. I know Memorial Park has used one of the lights temporarily. They may be approaching with a similar proposal. But it's, the technology's out there. It's regular plug-in, and it really has a significant amount of light.
Just thank you for pulling this together, but one question I would have, or I guess a comment, is if this was going to increase, because as part of the permanent infrastructure, the number of nighttime events in Gould or the other parks, I think it'd be important that that be considered by this board. So if there was input that we needed to get from neighbors, that we could do that.
So in terms of, we're just looking for our two nights for varsity and one night for youth. But in terms of what the rec may use it for, that would be obviously additional dates.
I was looking at Kendra when I said, when I said.
Who would, who would control the lights? Like, like you said, it would be locked. So who would have the lock? Like, does Kendra have a lock too?
We would obviously, as an asset of the park, it would be under their control, their jurisdiction, so that we wouldn't have 15 keys floating around.
I think it's a great idea. Thank you, guys.
It's similar to the scoreboard, which was funded and purchased, that other, you know, beyond football, baseball's now using the scoreboard. So we want to open it up and have everybody, everybody use it. It becomes an asset for the whole community.
Thank you for, for taking the time to present this to us. Is, I was just, for understanding purposes, so they're, they can be charged with a remote generator or a small generator, you said, but they don't require park electricity. So what, just out of curiosity, what's the source of the electricity?
So there'd be affixed to the light posts. There would be conduit weatherproofing that would bring it down to a lockbox. Add a lockbox would be a standard plug-in. We'd plug it either into an extension cord or a small generator, just like any, just like an outlet here. It's 110, which is standard household electricity. It's not commercial grade. It's not a greater requirement.
And that, and that is, are those power lines already present?
So there are some that are there already that the park makes available for the audio systems. We could use those or just bring, again, two small generators. We would not require Con Ed power. When the event's over, it's unplugged, it's locked up, and we go away.
Understood. Thank you so much.
Okay.
And you've already purchased the lights?
Pardon?
You've already purchased the lights?
Through previous donations, we received two arrays, and we were able to test the theory already, literally. And then also, we did some work at Springhurst, which was amazing for, you know, a temporary pilot.
I'm sure the Gould Club will love that for their one soccer night game a year.
Yeah, soccer uses them at Springhurst. So, but if we could improve the concept, two lights would light up all of Springhurst, and then we wouldn't have to do fundraising.
That's amazing.
Yeah.
We just, we'll need, like, the details and an estimate from the electrician, so then we can enter into the, an agreement with, with the donor, just like we did with the Little League.
Okay, so it sounds, I just want to make sure, is the board okay with this?
Yes.
Okay, so the board's okay with it. So just work out the details with our village attorney and village administrator, and good luck, and thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
See you at the games.
The Oegles.
Okay, the next item is the discussion regarding the repair of the wall on High Street. Richard, do you want to take the lead on that?
Well, I'll introduce Stephen, ask him to come forward. The DPW brought forward an issue with the wall and needing repair. Turn it over to Stephen. I think he's already gotten one estimate anyway.
Here we go. One, one quote and then one verbal. The one quote was for $13,000, and the other was for $16,000.
So can you just explain to us exactly, what are we talking about?
Yes, that wall on High Street, not High Street, Station Plaza.
Across from, across from the train station.
That needs to be restuck over and everything, so.
Okay. I just want to.
The one on the same side as the High, as High Street Park?
Yes, correct. That big wall.
Faces the river. It's gray. It's sort of, there's some chunks missing out of it. So all the, as I looked at it today, there's some, there's a few areas where there's some bigger pieces missing. I didn't see any exposed rebar or anything like that, but is there...
They'll just chip away to where the water got behind it.
So those can, those are non-structural repairs that can be done to the wall?
And is, is the water behind it, is it being mitigated somehow, so we're not going to have the same problem in a year?
As we seal it, it'll be fine. Restuck over everything. Water won't get behind the cement.
Water's coming down the hill behind the wall, right? So...
No, it's all grass. It goes over the top, and that's how the water's being behind it. That wall was not a 1910.
So because this is a discussion, I just want to tell you, there's, there's another section further up where Palisade kind of loops back around. It's where the wall turns up. Some damage was done to it some time ago. It's most visible from High Street Park area, but there is retaining wall damage that will have to be looked at at some point. That's holding up that street, that wall. So this is a, this is a cosmetic fix so that we can pursue the mural project, but there's a more substantial fix that will need to be done on that upper part of Palisade where it comes up to Maine.
Okay, so how does the board feel about this?
What were the quote, what were the numbers?
What was the 13,000? The other one was the 16.
13, 16?
And we're still waiting on one more quote.
Can we use this from the surplus from this year's DPW budget, Jeff? Or has it come out of some other fund?
Yeah, I mean, we can, if it's a, if we can get the requisite quotes, we can pull it out of this current fiscal budget.
Yeah. I'm in favor of that.
And I also just, this is also a, it's a really...
There'll be another price when we hire a artist.
Yeah, which we, we address that at that point. But I think, you know, the larger context of this wall is, it's the first thing you see when you get off the train in Dobbs Ferry. It's really our first, even without a mural, it's, you know, our first, our only chance to make a first impression of people coming into Dobbs, and it is in quite serious disrepair from just, I mean, an amateur eyeball.
From 1910, we got a lot of...
And we got a lot of...
The 1910 Board of Trustees got their money's worth out of that wall.
So yeah, that would be a separate, of course, discussion later, but I think repairing it is a really nice visual improvement to the first impression that folks have of Dobbs.
Okay, I mean, the rest of the board is okay with this? Okay. And I guess there'll be some questions regarding the, how it's going to look, and then what the materials will be, that type of a situation, right?
Yep.
Okay, so you can go forward and bring it back. Thank you. Next is the USDA Forest Service Urban and Community Forestry Program Grants. Richard?
Yeah, so the board has spoken about this, this potential grant previously. This would be a grant that would be instituted. The application would be by the Village of Hastings, and it would be a consortium group of the Village of Hastings, Dobbs Ferry, and Irvington. It's basically looking at your existing forestry. There's a lot of issues with the existing forests and deterioration of the forest, and it would also be an opportunity to do some replanting. And also, there would be an educational component, so it would involve members of the community, the schoolchildren as well. They've apportioned, this would be a five-year grant if it's awarded. They've apportioned it amongst the three communities based on the percentage of forest in each community. And so Dobbs Ferry is approximately 8%. And so, of a $500,000 grant, so your total exposure over five years would be $42,220, and that could be partially in cash, partially in kind. So...
And the goal of this grant would be to do what?
Well, it's basically to look at your existing forests and see what agents are destroying them, and try to weed them out, and also to do a bunch of replanting, which they've already been doing, but it'll be more, more concentrated.
What specific forest in Dobbs Ferry are we talking about? The Juring estate?
Juring is one of the ones that came to me.
Is the Juring a village-owned property, or is it a state?
Village-owned property only. And so, you know, we're also looking at the parcel of land that you all have been working on for quite a while to get from the state and the county along the Parkway. And, you know, you've been doing a lot of, we've been doing a lot of planting there anyway. But it's just an opportunity, the for, I'm not that knowledgeable about it, but, I mean, the forests are deteriorating, and there are elements that this would look at. So, you know, you may or may not be successful in the grant application, or Hastings may or may not. There are certain aspects that they may require. So at this point, it's just an application for the grant, and it's a potential commitment over five years.
So one of the CAB does a lot of volunteer projects in these areas. So sometimes that's based on species removal, sometimes it's replantings. So this potentially could provide them with some additional resources, right? Purchasing, you know, sort of trees to plant, purchasing equipment. Sometimes they, you know, the DPW often supplies things like mulch and, you know, but they could, for example, we wanted to put up a little sort of kiosk signage at the entry, at the two entries to the new, soon-to-be Dobbs Ferry property park along Somille. And so this could be a potential, you know, place where we could spend a little bit of money to, you know, sort of make a trail identifier, signage, things like that.
This is, to me, this is a no-brainer. It's a highly levered way to invest in our forests. We should do it.
Good.
Okay. Rest of the board feels that way?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay, so let's move forward with it, Richard.
Thanks, Richard, for...
Thank you.
Okay, so we're onto the agenda for the regular meeting. So the first action is to appoint Casey Matherson as volunteer firefighter to the Village of Dobbs Ferry Fire Department. So is there a motion to appoint Casey Matherson as a volunteer firefighter for the Village of Dobbs Ferry Fire Department? Trustee Sullivan, second trustee Rosen Asher, all in favor? That passes unanimously. We want to thank Casey for volunteering and taking the time to do all the strenuous requirements to become a volunteer firefighter, and we appreciate the efforts of all the firefighters in the village. So thank you. Next is a public hearing to consider a local law to talk about this, the sidewalk sales and clarify the requirements for obtaining a permit. So is there a motion to open the public hearing? Trustee Rosen Asher, second trustee Patino, public hearing is hereby open. Laurie, do you want to go with this?
Sure. In your code in Chapter 238, which is your peddling licensing chapter, there was no provision in here for accommodating a special sidewalk sale or organized or sponsored event of that nature. So with the, with the suggestion of trustee Galen, I've included now the ability for special sidewalk sales to be exempt from individual vending permits, which is what you would normally do, and to clarify that the sponsor or the organizer of these special sidewalk sale events will be responsible to obtain a license for the, for the event itself, not requiring each particular vendor to come forward. And individual vendors or participants then can participate in these organized ways without being out of pocket for the licensing requirement.
Okay. Any comments by the board?
Just a question. That, they, the village would still receive identification or insurance requirements from all of the participants, I assume?
Yes, the sponsor would be responsible to obtain the licensing and the insurance from the vending vendors.
Well, what I'm asking, though, is the village, the village would still be potentially liable, right? So if, if a sponsor didn't get, obtain all of the, all of the indemnifications or insurance or whatever it is we require?
Then the vendor would not qualify to participate in the special sidewalks.
Okay.
Yeah.
But that would still go to the village?
Correct.
Okay.
I, I think this, this makes sense.
I do, too. I'm just, I just don't, I just don't...
I think that it's, it's simplifying the process and encouraging businesses to work together and encouraging a more cohesive downtown. And this is done in so many other communities on a regular basis, and they're great community events, and they bring people to, they'll bring people to the village from other communities, and it simplifies the process so that, you know, we don't have to worry if store A gets it, but store B doesn't, and what if they put out a table anyway? And I think it's a great idea.
Right now, they are prohibited from selling. The only sidewalk permit now that exists is for a cap. So this would, this would allow these organized events. And you can see, I, I put the caveat in, it's for a period not to exceed seven days in conjunction with a sponsored or organized sidewalk sales event, which is open to participation by any retail individual. So it would be a fair and, fair and equitable way to encourage vending. And as trustee Galen has mentioned, there are some vacant storefronts, so it would mean that retail vendors from other parts of the village could come and set up under the guise of the sponsoring event. That's great.
Is there going to be some sort of permit application process for the sponsoring or...
It's the vendor, it's the vendor license that you get through the clerk's office.
So the, in this, in, okay, so there is a vendor license, it will be the same vendor license the sponsoring organization can apply for that existing vendor license?
A peddling license is applied through the clerk's office, and it just means that there needs to be one for the event, and that sponsor will be responsible to obtain all the required licenses and indemnifications and insurance and all of those things.
And in the case of a event that the village is the sponsor, quote-unquote sponsor of, well, does the participating department apply for that license, or how does that?
The, well, you, you're exempt from the license itself, but the sponsor or the organizer will have to present, will have to obtain the certificates of insurance. And in the case of a food vendor, a Department of Health, you know, the village would be getting that. I would assume last week at the food truck event that we had all of those licenses through the rec department.
Okay, so, and, and this is, just to clarify, this is, it is up, so the sponsoring or facilitating organization or entity appeals to the Board of Trustees to, to...
To schedule the event.
To schedule the event, and they can decide at that point. There is no fee charged by the village necessarily for provision of that permit?
Well, the, the peddling permit has a fee associated.
Okay, but that's a, so whatever that, I forget what that fee is.
150, I think.
Okay, so that, that, I'm sorry?
100.
100. So that, that fee is paid by the sponsoring organization or entity, and it covers everyone, assuming the event is approved by the Board of Trustees?
Correct. Yeah, because the use of the sidewalks, because they're public, they're public health interests for the public in general. So we need to make sure that there's room for pedestrians' usage, that they're not blocking fire, hydrants, you know, that kind of thing. So yes, they would come here, ask permission.
Okay.
Schedule the event, and then the sponsor would then apply for the, the peddling license.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you so much.
Any other comments from the board? Any comments from the public? Is there any comments from anyone online? Okay, so I'm going to take a motion to close the public hearing. Trustee Rosen Asher, second trustee Taylor. Public hearing is hereby closed. At this point, I'm assuming that all in favor of this, so is there a motion to revise Chapter 238 of the Dobbs Ferry Code related to organized sidewalk sales events as outlined in the proposed law? Trustee Galen?
Thank you.
Second trustee Rosen Asher, all in favor? And that passes unanimously. So I want to thank trustee Galen for her efforts in this, and for, to Laurie for the efforts that you've done in bearing this. So thank you for your work on this. Now, become two courtesy of the floors. Anybody who wants to speak? We have to have the former mayor go, some first names, right? You can't park your car anywhere you want, so you can go first.
My name is Don Mara, 30 Maplewood Avenue. I'm here actually to seek your assistance. As many of you know, Con Ed is doing work all over the county, and since October, they tore up the streets of Clinton, Bechdale, Kitching, Appleton. And, you know, the residents in the area, of course, put up with it, knowing that it's work that had to be done. What's bothering us is that the work's been done for about two weeks, and I requested, I know Richard looked in it, looked into it for us, that one road will be paved. It has to be paved. It's a disaster. And I could, he was told that would be end of August, possibly September. And that, to me, it makes no sense at all. And my daughter lives in Rye. Same, same work was done. Two weeks later, the road was paved. I was in Tarrytown the other night. I know they worked on Main Street. One week later, after work was done, the street was paved. So to wait three months, because the work was done in the area about two or three weeks ago, for, for us to wait that long to have the road repaired, Village Road, seems to me a little bit unacceptable. And so I was hoping that, I'm actually requesting that, for your assistance, that somehow you could look into it again and make an appeal to Con Ed to speed up the process. I don't know why it would, it would, somehow they said that it would, they have to wait till the Ashford Avenue project's done, which, to me, they're not, they're not related. One is one part of town, one is the other part of town. So I don't have, I mean, I have no access to Con Ed, but I was hoping that you, as our representatives, can look into it again and make an appeal to Con Ed to speed up the process and get, get these roads paved. The roads were a disaster with the plates forever, and the roads are still pretty bad, even though the plates are up. So that's basically, I'm here just to make that request, and thank you for anything you could do.
Okay.
Hi, Mayor.
Hi, Mayor.
We recently adopted new provisions in the street opening section. Chapter of your code 265.2 says that segmenting the restoration of roadways in a non-contiguous manner is prohibited, except this may be approved by the Superintendent of Public Works. So it appears as though you have a code provision which prohibits what you're describing. So maybe that would be the basis to...
I don't, I don't think that's what the mayor is talking about. I think he's saying that it's not happening fast enough.
Right, because they're waiting for the Ashford work to be done. So that's segmenting, which is prohibited.
Okay, gotcha. I'm sorry. I thought you were talking about the halves of the streets.
No, it's, it's, it's called segmenting the restoration.
And because they're working on one section and another section.
Right, right.
This is something that you worked on last year because of exactly what happened.
Exactly what's happening. This was to address the Con Ed issue, so we can reach out again, I'm sure, pointing this out, because you do have a code that's enforceable, that says you can't do what they're doing.
So Laurie could help write a lawyer letter and...
Write a lawyer letter.
No, that's a good idea. Anyway, as I said, I thank you for anything you could do, because it does seem silly. You'd have to wait three months and maybe go into school time to pave the road. So it makes absolutely no sense to us. So thank you very much for listening to us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bob Radomski, Ogden Avenue. I might be able to answer your question. I worked for Con Ed for almost 40 years, and I was heavily involved in that. There is, or was, because I've been retired now 16 years, a 90-day settlement hearing.
That's what we were just thinking.
Yes. And that road, if you were to pave that road now without putting capcrete or what they call K-creed in that hole, it's going to sink. You have to put something permanent that's on, K-creed is like a slurry of concrete and... You have to put something permanent that's on, capcrete is like a slurry of concrete and sand mixture and it doesn't sink. But if you backfill that with what you dug up with, it's going to sink. And that's why a 90-day settlement period is usually used. Unless they've changed it in 16 years, I don't think so. They may have put capcrete in it, I don't know.
It may have been.
Okay, but normally they wait 90 days for a settlement period. Okay? But again, I've been out 16 years, so things might have changed in that little bit of time. Okay, at the last meeting, I asked how much per month the fence around Gould Park at Ashford Avenue was costing? And what we estimate the cost to repair the wall? And was told that you would have those costs for me. Do we now have them?
Well, I know that there are certain portions of the fence and the orange blockade. I don't know exactly what the language is.
Does our manager who pays the bills know?
What is the question? I'm sorry. How much is the cost of the fence?
What does it cost us per month for that fence around?
It's not paid for by the month, it's paid for by the year, I was told.
How much is it per year?
Okay, excuse me, I thought it was approximately $3,000, but treasurer can let us know the exact.
$3,000 per year?
Jeff, what is the number? I thought it was 3,000.
I, I don't have that.
Okay, we'll get it for you when we get back here.
That's very, that's a very underestimated. How much does it, is it going to cost us for that wall? Do we have any estimate on that at all?
What are you talking?
Instead of just.
Some of the Gould Park projects and the wall at Gould Park, but it's not, we haven't estimated out just the.
We didn't, I didn't, I didn't say that I would give this to you last, at the last meeting. What we said was that we're working on the project. When the documents are done, we will put that out to bid. And when it comes back, we'll discuss it as part of a public hearing before it gets approved. So there's no way for us to give you that number.
How about our engineering costs as per right now? How much does that cost us?
I just want to point out that courtesy of the floor is not a Q and A opportunity. If you have a point you'd like to bring up or bring to us.
How much money are we wasting here getting nothing done?
Okay.
That's my point. I paid taxes to this village for over 50 years, property taxes. I want to know that my money is used wisely. And this is why we have a board of trustees. And this is why you were elected, to make sure that money is used wisely.
And what, excuse me, what makes you think it's not being used wisely?
I don't know, but that fence has been up there for almost a year and a half now.
Half of the fence is about to come down. Fence is being paid for on an annual basis. It's not costing you anything per month. It's a safety issue and it has to be there to secure the public.
Understood.
The wall is under study. It's being studied by a group, including the engineer. When the results are ready for it to be shared with the public and put out for public bid, it will be a public document. We have a very good and highly qualified engineer and the village is very fortunate to have them. I'm not concerned that there's any waste of money on that or any other level associated with this wall.
Is this the same engineer that didn't know that there was voids under the sidewalk in our village?
No.
The village has a new engineer, we have new planners, and everything is always transparent. So when we are ready to put this out to bid, it'll be out there and you can come and comment on it. The specs will be out there for you to review and comment on. And when it comes down to picking the right plan, you can come and talk about it as well. We're certainly not going to hide such a project. What happens with that project is the more you dig, the more you find, right? So, and we're trying to do this, we're trying to do that. We could have repaired the wall months ago and you would have a wall. And then three months later, you'd find that you'd have a leak behind someplace else. So we're doing it all comprehensively. And I get it, it's been, I get emails that it's been so long as well. I totally get it. We want to move along.
Should we have some of our local people get involved in this? Some of our local contractors give you some ideas? Would we have an open meeting on this to get some ideas?
Well, it's going to go out to bid and those people can certainly bid on the project and tell us what they think about the scope of the project.
Shouldn't we have a meeting before that?
No, we're not going to have meetings with people who are not part of the village to discuss it. We have a village engineer.
Not part of the village, but we have local contractors that are part of the village.
We don't have construction.
Right, so that, that's, we're just, this is the way it's, the village trustees have decided to run this project.
I hope it's done within reason, because that's our gateway there and it doesn't look good driving through Dobbs Ferry.
I, we all agree.
Anybody else?
Good evening. My name is Dalton. I live on Palisade Street. I came here this evening to get more information on criteria for wall repair based on the agenda on High Street. I decided to speak because one of the board of trustees already brought up the wall on Palisade Street and that it is in need of repairs. Speaking to my neighbors on that street, there are concerns about the stability of that wall based on damage on the side facing the river, so not something you can see on the street. But we're also concerned with preserving the historic aspects, as this is currently a nice stone wall where people, I see people stop along their way to and from the train station to just observe the view because it overlooks the Palisades. This being a street frequented by visitors and many would be, many would be disappointed to see it replaced by a simple guardrail or something that takes away from the beauty of that view. It may even be a case where it could be patched to prevent more serious damage later. But it should be looked at soon at, unless it's, in case it hasn't already been looked at. Thank you.
Thank you.
So thanks, I, we have identified that problem. It's in a list of infrastructure concerns that our engineer will eventually get to, hopefully sooner rather than later. It appears as though it can be repaired in place, as opposed to, I don't see why we'd want to replace that wall, particularly with something of lesser quality. So that's the, that would be the primary goal. Thanks for bringing that up.
Anyone else?
Hi, I'm John Delallo. I live at 56 Palisade Street. And I don't know the protocol here, or I would have submitted this earlier as, I guess, an agenda item. We, we don't live near Gould Park, but we live literally 30 yards from the basketball court at Memorial Park. And, and about maybe 30 feet from the outside wall of the Embassy Club. And so since the pandemic, we've been really subjected to a great deal of noise from loudspeakers. And I have a description of this and I have videos of this and I have a wish list. I think what pushed, what pushed me to appear was the, the night games at the, at the park with the Little League. They had, they had loudspeakers pointed right at our house. And I don't think people are really mindful of the fact that the geography here is like an amphitheater. Really is. I can almost hear people talking at the basketball court sometimes. And so when they, when they turn speakers towards us, it's really, really quite loud. And we have a three-family, we have tenants. My tenants have complained to me about it. And I'm just really hoping for a very friendly conversation about this in a problem-solving kind of way. And I have a wish list for what I think.
You could tell us what the wish list is? You have three minutes to tell us the wish list and certainly you can mail it to us so we could look at all.
I'll, I'll email it to, I'll tell it. The wish list is, Village ordinance prohibiting all playing of music in Memorial Park except with a special permit or permit for special events. That would include kids with their boomboxes with vulgar lyrics that penetrate my office and I'm a psychiatrist and I'm online with my patients and it's loud. And it's not nice. So special event, we should get several days' notice to the area residents affected by really big events. And the speakers should be aimed toward the river and away from the street, away from the buildings. It makes a huge difference. I want to note, Mr. Kelly is not here, but I did speak with him. He is the director of Little League that night. He was very gracious and he did, he did move those speakers all the way to the other side of the basketball court to move them around and it made a huge difference. And my tenants were also pleased. So aiming the speakers and the volume should be limited to a level consistent with homeowners' rights to peaceful enjoyment. And finally, this only happened once, but the Embassy Club is now renting out space. They have a garage space, like a parking space, right under this extra part they put on. And when there's music in there, particularly if it's like PA, it's literally less, it's literally about as far as that wall from, from my kitchen. And it's unbelievably how loud it is. I mean, just the acoustics of it. We had friends over and they're like, wow, it's like a dance party in here. We couldn't have conversations in certain parts of our houses. I would really ask that there not be any outdoor music allowed at Embassy Club. I absolutely hate making these requests because we like Little League, we like basketball games across the street. We don't have any problem with the Embassy Club. Just trying to have, I think, what anybody would want as far as reasonable amount of, you know, peaceful.
Okay, well, thank you for that. If you sent out an email stating that, we could take a look at what we can and cannot do. So thank you. Is anybody? Patty? Wasn't he just here?
Guess he couldn't wait.
Okay.
Yeah, I also have other stuff I gotta do. Can you hear me? I just wanted to thank Kendra, Steve, the rec department, everybody who put together a really remarkably fun event on Sunday afternoon. It was a wonderful time. The, Mayor, I don't know if you arranged it for this time, that it would be sunny and no rain. We should do it last year for the festive, maybe next year. It was just a really wonderful day and thanks to everybody for making it so good.
Okay, thank you, Patty. We also want to thank Kendra for all the efforts that she did and DPW. I mean, I know many of us were there, we saw how well-attended it was, how the DPW guys were working, seemed like non-stop. And we had a great turnout and I think it reflected very well on the village and the village staff. So I echo, and I assure the board of trustees, we all echo Patty's thoughts. So thank you for a great event, both of you. Anybody else? Okay, so let's move to the resolutions. Action item number one is to consider a resolution authorizing the interim village administrator to award the bid for the 2023 paving to the lowest responsible bidder. We do have that information now and I believe it's in the amount of $623,955.50 to ELQ Industries, who will be paving five streets throughout the village, including Beacon Hill Drive, High Ridge Road, Ridge Road, Castle Hill Close, and the dead end of Lower Hildale Road. So is there a motion to authorize this action? Trustee Patino, second trustee Rosenberg, all in favor? That passes unanimously. And you have a schedule, Steve, or one that's going to start? Okay. Action item number two is to consider a resolution authorizing the Department of Public Works to public purchase a 2023 Ford Explorer Hybrid and to declare a 2016 Ford Escape as surplus equipment. We discussed this at the last, the last workshop meeting and I think we all agreed that it was time to sell the seven-year-old car and to purchase a hybrid 2023 Ford Explorer. The purchase price would be $58,033.33. Is there a motion to authorize this sale and purchase? Trustee Taylor, second trustee Patino, all in favor? That passes unanimously. Action item number two, three, is to consider a resolution authorizing the Department of Public Works. Well, we're not going to actually do this today, so we're going to table that motion and table that resolution. So let's move on to the next one. Consider a resolution to schedule a public hearing to consider a local law on parking. So we met earlier today to review the proposed changes, amendments to the local law regarding parking. I think we've finally reached a consensus and an agreement on this. So we're going to schedule a public hearing for June 13th, 2023 at 7:30. So is there a motion to schedule a public hearing for a local law regarding parking on June 13th, 2023? Trustee Taylor, second trustee Rosen Asher, all in favor? And that passes unanimously. Action item number four is to consider a resolution to accept the annual audit of the village justice court records and docket for fiscal year ending May 31st, 2022. We did receive a report from the independent accountant regarding the village's justice court records. It all seemed to be in order, so.
Notice, I mean, maybe I just had a cut-off version, but I didn't have like the signature from the auditor.
That the report hasn't gone final yet?
Oh, is that why?
Yeah, yeah.
Thanks.
Okay, so is there a motion to accept the annual audit of the village's justice court records? Trustee Sullivan, second trustee Galen, all in favor? That passes unanimously. Next action item is to consider a resolution authorizing the interim village administrator to execute an agreement with the Fiona Company to provide grant services to the village of Dobbs Ferry. So in the past, we had used the Fiona Company. She was great in helping us to identify and obtain grants that were available to us in the last years, I believe. We're not working with her. So I know that Richard met with her and she's forwarded to us an explanation of what her services provide and her fee, which I believe is $160 per hour. So I think we're very satisfied with her work and we'd like to contract with her again. So is there a motion to authorize the interim village administrator to execute an agreement, an agreement with the Fiona Company to provide grant services to the village of Dobbs Ferry? Trustee Galen, second trustee Rosenberg, all in favor? That passes unanimously. Next action item is to consider a resolution authorizing the village administrator to execute a renewal retainer agreement with McCarthy Fingar to provide legal services to the village of Dobbs Ferry commencing on June 1st, 2023. The law firm of McCarthy Fingar has been providing legal services, I believe, for two years. And we've been overall very satisfied with the services rendered by that law firm.
Who negotiated this agreement on our behalf, however, is my question.
I just want, I just want to be clear, this isn't paid me.
It's two years without a contract.
Oh, they went two years without a contract, okay.
Yeah, we were, we, our, our contract did expire about 15 months ago, so this is helpful.
Okay, so is there a motion to authorize the interim village administrator to execute a renewal retainer agreement with McCarthy Fingar to provide legal services to the village of Dobbs Ferry commencing on June 1st, 2023? Trustee Rosenberg, second trustee Galen, all in favor? That passes unanimously. Next action item is to consider a resolution.
I just wanted to note on that last one, though, I did raise a couple of questions about the scope of services with Richard. He's going to confirm it with McCarthy Fingar before signing it.
So you had a problem with, because it looks like it's laid out.
I just wanted to make sure that it was consistent with the original retainer. Because it's phrased differently and the paragraphs are different, so I want to make sure that it's the same.
Okay, so subject to Richard's reviewing that. Next action item is to consider a motion authorizing the interim village administrator to enter into an application with the village of Hastings on Hudson and Irvington for a grant under the USDA Forest Service Urban and Community Forestry Program with the village of Dobbs Ferry matched not to exceed $42,220. We just discussed this, we're all in agreement with it. So is there a motion to authorize the village administrator to enter into this agreement and go forward with this program? Trustee Patino, second trustee Rosen Asher, all in favor? That passes unanimously. Next item is to consider a resolution authorizing the interim village administrator to execute a retainer agreement with Marie. Thank you, because I was working on this all afternoon. How do you say that again?
Adukovich.
Adukovich. To provide legal services to the village of Dobbs Ferry in connection with Sershiari Matters. Can you just explain, Richard, why we have to use an outside counsel?
Sure, so several years ago, the village turned over its assessment function to the town. So the town has been doing the annual assessment of all properties in the village. Village no longer does that function. Taxpayers that are aggrieved with their assessment have the right to bring an action, either in small claims for a small tax assessment reduction if they think they've been. either in small claims for a small tax assessment reduction if they think they've had a slight overcharge, or larger taxpayers can bring a tax Sachiari action, which means that they're challenging their assessments. Prior to the town taking over the assessment function, it was done by the village, and all of the assessments that were put on by the village are subject to challenge. Since they took over the assessment function, the town is responding on behalf of the village on all the tax Sachiari, you know, new, new filings. However, there were a group of approximately, I would say, 30 cases that precede the town's taking over, and they're, they've continued to be there. They really haven't been followed to any great extent. They may, some of them may have lapsed, some of them may have been merged with later cases. Generally, for better or for worse, attorneys tend to bundle the cases so that when they're settled, they get a better return, they get a better percentage return. So, some of these cases may have been bundled with later ones, but we really don't know. The attorney that had been handling it on behalf of the village in Greenberg took another position, I think town attorney, or is pending, so he could no longer handle them. So, we have about 30 cases that are still open on the books, or may have been merged or abandoned, but we don't know that. So, Marie is, she does this type of work, she's very good on behalf of the municipality. She'll be charged basically with going to the solicitor cases and trying to find out what their status is, and ultimately, if they need be, she'll help the village to dispose of them. But it's basically to go back and handle this gap period that's still outstanding. She'll give us an hourly rate, and she's pretty, very reliable and impressive.
Okay, I think the hourly rate is $225. So, is there a motion to authorize the interim village administrator to execute a retainer agreement so we can provide legal services to the village in connection with Sachiari Matters? Trustee Rosen Asher, second trustee Taylor, all in favor. That passes unanimously. You have the audit of claims that Jeff has submitted. Is there a motion to approve the audit of claims as submitted and recommended by the village treasurer? Trustee Taylor, second trustee Patino, all in favor. That passes unanimously. There was one other item that I'd like to add, and I think we had sent this around in the email regarding the NERCERTA grant for $5,000. Is it a discussion item, or can you talk a little bit? I know I'm, we didn't really address it, but can you talk a little bit about it?
I mean, a little bit. I think trustee Taylor probably has more of a handle on the, on the history and the process, but basically, I think the village earned the right to the award of a $5,000 grant as a result of its sustainability efforts and its energy-conscious efforts over the last several years. Now, in, in awarding the grant, the village has an opportunity to identify the area that it would like to pursue, to spend the $5,000 on. There are a number, I sent you over the, the general guide. It's got a number of options in there, including sustainability options. And then I mentioned before, there's also an option of using the money apparently for an EV charging station, but, I mean, there's another of our options in there. There's many items, you know, that are, would be something that, that, you know, the village would like to pursue, I'm sure. Ironically, we had a, the sustainability, the sustainability committee, and then I'll turn it over to you. You know, they had a number of, they had two suggestions, I'm sure they have others as well. One of them had to do with the, you know, the household, the household waste, or the edibles, or I forget, what do you call that?
Food scraps.
Yeah, food scraps. One of them is that. And the other one would be to set up something, and they both involved DPW. We haven't really had an in-depth conversation about them. One of them, the other one would be to set up a situation where people could bring things that were excess, or maybe they didn't need anymore. They could bring them there and then exchange for other items. My concern with that, and they, they mentioned, or I'm aware of Scarsdale as a model, and ironically, at our, at our village administrator meeting today, we had Scarsdale there, and they were telling us all about the food scraps program and also, you know, this trading situation. My, my apprehension with that is that Scarsdale has a, has a fenced-off area, and their, their site is manned all the time. I'm, I'm just a little apprehensive that things would be dropped there that would ultimately be a problem of disposal, but, you know, I mean, anything is open for discussion, of course, and I think we have a deadline that we need to decide, and the mayor has to forward a letter. We're gonna set forth a sustainability history of the village in order to sell it. I think it's gotta be done by the end of the month, so that's why, good to start the conversation tonight, so.
Yeah, well, I think, I think you, you covered that fairly well. As, as Richard said, the two suggestions were a drop-off recycling, they call these things take it or leave it, areas where, and, and the idea is it eliminates bulk waste, it, you know, lets, you reuse things that, you know, one person has done with, the next. There are some supervisory responsibilities associated with how that gets managed, in terms of where it is, whether or how it needs to be supervised and managed. In terms of, the other benefit of that is it, is it helps people who may be residents who maybe can't afford something new, but something used that they can take, that would have otherwise been thrown away. I mean, you see it at the curb, where people put stuff out and put a sign on it saying free, and it's gone. At the end of the day, someone else wants that couch or that, you know, whatever it is. The, the SDF didn't talk about using those funds for an EV charger, but that is a priority. So, I think we need to think about it. Anything that involves the DPW, and, and yes, I'm looking at you, Steve, we need to make sure it's practical for you and, and your team to be able to, you know, whatever responsibilities. A paint drop-off was another, was another thing, that there's an organization that would then take it from a central location periodically, so that that paint didn't end up in the waste stream where it shouldn't be. But if we, we should, we need, we do need to act expeditiously to get this done, so, you know, if, if the SDF can help, I think they'd be more than willing to chat.
Yeah, that'd be great, and I just wanted to mention, this was so interesting today. I know next to nothing about food scraps, but, you know, Scarsdale's in contract with the county. They now have to take it up to Cortland, and they're paying $10 a ton, whereas if they dispose it through the, through garbage, it's $30 a ton. So, there is, there is some savings there. In terms of this program that we're talking about, I don't know where, I don't know where the $5,000 would be spent. You know, I think it's gotta be something fixed or whatever. I guess if you did the drop-off, you could build a shed, for example, but it's, you know, it's just something to think about, and I think we, if we could put it on for the next work session, workshop, and maybe in the interim, the sustainability group could see what suggestions they might have.
Great. Thank you.
Hastings has a take it or leave it, but it's not run by the village, it's just run by citizens, you know, so they've been doing that for at least a, a year or so, and plus there's also the Buy Nothing Group on Facebook, which is very, very effective for people. And I mean, I think charging stations are definitely a priority, and food scrap waste is really the direction that everybody's going in, you know, so either one of those would be great.
One of the things that we attended at the NiCOM conference was, Jessica and I, and I think the mayor was there as well, was about EV charging, and I think rather than doing like a one-off thing with $5,000, we need to do something that's a little bit more comprehensive, and that may include finding an opportunity to bring Level 3 chargers in, so we can start to give the, the chief the opportunity to, to bring electric police vehicles in. So, I think, I think that, like, doing this as a one-off, there, one of the things that was impressive about that session was just how many decisions are between hardware, software, how, you know, how you're gonna position them, how you're gonna work with ConEd to make sure that the power exists at the, at the sites that you wanna drop the power at. Like, there's, there's a, this is a far-from shovel-ready thing, and I think that we need to do, have some conversations with some of the folks that we met up at the NiCOM conference, and take a more comprehensive approach to, to EV chargers, while I am super in favor of, of EVs and bringing more infrastructure to the village.
I know that the sustainability, some members of the Sustainability Task Force have also been trying to come up with some ideas about, I don't know how this came about, and trustee Taylor, you may have more information, but on increased waste and recycling stations in the downtown, so that could be a place to maybe look for some of this funding to go, if, you know, that has other implications for waste collection, but maybe there's an opportunity to dovetail off some of the work they're already doing.
What was the deadline? I thought you said it was the end of this month.
I think it's June 28th.
Okay.
But, but again, there, there are a number of steps, it's more than just, you know, us deciding, because the DPW has to be on board if they're involved and all the rest of it. I think that's why the SDF wanted to make sure that we weren't running around the last week or two trying to figure it out.
Okay, so we'll add it to the next workshop. Okay. Is there anything else? Let's do the trustee reports.
One more resolution, or about how this, you asked, that you decided the rate sort of being out for the parking permit, if you want to start selling the commuter permits, because that was the only one we didn't want to get, is the resolution that you had again.
I got it.
Yeah?
Thank you.
We have to change one thing on there, change the senior system, senior system, we have to add anything.
We didn't change those. We didn't change those for water, for the resident commuter, the waterfront park. It's the same as it is now, it's not changed.
Do I have to put this?
You have to move to add it to the agenda.
Have to do the resolution on that?
Yeah, I would, yeah, I would take a vote to add it to the agenda.
Okay, so is there a motion to add to the agenda, a resolution revising the master fee schedule parking fees? Trustee Sullivan, second trustee Taylor, it's now added to the agenda. Is there a motion to revise the master fee schedule parking fees outlined in the schedule?
It is only the commuter permits in this, the rest of them will have to wait until after you pass the local law.
Okay. Is there a motion as laid out by Flora Lee? Trustee Rosen Asher, second trustee Patino, all in favor. That passes. Thank you. Okay, trustee Galen, why don't you tell us what you've been up to for the last two weeks?
Sure. A lot of work on the Phoenisha Flea coming up on June 3rd, and as well as some of the Sesquicentennial events in partnership with the Recreation Department and the Rivertown Chamber of Commerce. So, on the Phoenisha Flea front, I'm really excited because we have 30 visiting vendors coming in that Phoenisha Flea has organized for us, and apparently it sold out immediately, those 30 spots, because their reputation from last year was so fabulous. All the vendors in their network wanted to come to Dobbs, and we have 10 Dobbs Ferry businesses participating as well, and the fee has been waived for those participating Dobbs Ferry vendors. And we're also going to have a Dobbs Ferry community tent. We've invited 15 or 20 community organizations and committees to participate, and hopefully a number of them will attend and share the great work that they're doing for this Sesquicentennial weekend. It's great that we were able to approve this new sidewalk sale permit, because that means that we will have fabulous downtown Dobbs Ferry sidewalk celebration on Saturday, July 1st, and we've been working on some entertainment for that. We've just, I believe, today secured some entertainment for the corner of Cedar and Main. That's going to be going throughout the day, so I'm really excited about that. And we're just getting the word out to all the downtown businesses and all the Dobbs Ferry businesses about all these opportunities to participate, and it's been really wonderful to have the village and the chamber working so closely together on all of this. And the Zoning Board of Appeals continues to do fabulous zoning appeal work.
I'm gonna jump in if I could, Mayor, because on the same day as Phoenisha Flea, and also working together with the chamber.
Yes, absolutely.
And with the downtown businesses here and in the other river towns, is the annual River Arts Music Tour. It's gonna feature over 350 performers, 90 different bands. It's gonna be an exciting event, which we'll dovetail with these others to help get people in, in the village out and around, hope for a beautiful day, and there'll be good music for Phoenisha Flea.
Yes, and also some food vendors as well at the same location as the River Arts and the Flea, so big party, June 3rd, save the date.
Sounds great. You also said Sesquicentennial twice.
Oh, I'll say it, I'll say it three times, Mayor. Say it again.
Without tripping up on it, that's very impressive.
And it was nice that you tried.
I have to work on it, I have a couple of months.
Just keep going, don't lose your confidence in the middle of the work.
Matt, what do you have?
I, there has not been anything, Affordable Housing Task Force meets on, on Thursday. We're getting ready to come to the village with some, some thoughts and recommendations around projects that, the outlines of which we talked about at a previous meeting. And we're also very happy that, with the nominating committee, who has been providing a really good pipeline of candidates, it's been a steady stream, and I wanna thank Chairwoman Donna Suma for, for all of the great work from the, from the nominating committee.
And you and I met with some of the chambers of commerce last week, and they, we, we answered their questions regarding parking and other concerns they may have had. They happen to love the parking changes.
I believe the quote was, "You solved parking."
So, yes, and I wanna.
Knock wood on that.
Yes. So, I wanna thank Margaret for attending that and providing her expertise as well, so thank you. Nicole, do you have anything?
Yep, so I, I did attend both nights of the inaugural softball and baseball nights at Memorial Park, and I think it was a great success. Obviously, we learned something tonight that we can do better if they do it next year to make it more comfortable for the neighboring residents. I know they, they did take care to think about it, but obviously, it was the first time. It was a great success, see a lot of Dobbs Ferry and other communities come out. Armonk actually subbed in for the softball, the 12-year softball team, and they couldn't stop expressing how wonderful Dobbs Ferry was and the community and the, and the families. And the DPW did a outstanding job both nights. I don't know who the two, the two guys, say them by name, but they, Bill Kelly from the Little League sent an email too, because they really did an outstanding job keeping the park super clean, and they relined the field in between games, which I think everyone appreciated. And then yesterday, we all attended the Food Truck Festival, which was another great success with a petting zoo, including a kangaroo, and another fun activities. I was babysitting, so four little toddlers, so I had my head going, but yeah, it was great. And then, I guess you'll talk about Memorial Day.
Yeah. Mike, do you have anything?
Nothing to report on from the planning or CAV this meeting.
Shari, you have anything?
I've kind of been out of the loop, but I do know that the Human Rights and Diversity Committee sent out a survey, a community survey, so they, I think they have hard copies in several locations in the village, and it also went out in the newsletter, and I'll go send it out again, it's so people could, could access it a little better, but I encourage everyone to fill it out, so we can hear from as many people and as many different constituencies in the village as possible. So, that's all I got.
There's a, there's a box and a copy, it's right here in the lobby. So, if you're coming to Village Hall, drop it in the box.
And I think, Margaret, we, there was a link issue or something with scanning and...
No, so if, and this is, I mean, this is a question. When people give me the, the things put in the newsletter, and they have the QR code, someone is looking at that QR code on their phone, you have to really jump to figure out how to actually act a QR code. So, I did preach out today, and I'm sure, but.
I mean, I use the, I, I opened it up on my computer and used my phone with the QR card, but I do think that if anyone's submitting anything, and there is a QR code, also include a link. So, this way, if people open it on their computer, or they open it on their phone, either way, they can, they can access it.
Okay, and I wanna stress that we are having the Memorial Day Parade. It's being put on by the American Legion, and we're certainly happy to support the American Legion's effort on Memorial Day. It starts at 11 o'clock, and we will be meeting at the high school, and then marching down to the memorial park and have a short ceremony there. And then from there, there will be hot dogs and other refreshments at Waterfront Park. I said that all right? Did I have that all right, the timing and the direction?
Yes.
Yes, so we look forward to everyone being there.
The parade leaves at 11 a.m., so gathering begins at 10:15, I believe. The parade leaves at 11 a.m., so gathering begins at 10:15, I believe.
The ceremony starts when the...
Ceremony starts at 11, you're right.
Yes, I'm sorry, the ceremony at 11.
At the high school.
So, is there anything else?
Yeah, you skipped me.
Why, you put your two cents in.
Oh, I went in early, but that was just on River Arts. Just very quickly, the library is, is working to try and see if there's, to explore a way that they can create short-term parking in front of the library where there are basically two or three empty spots. So, that's going to have to, the traffic committee has sent a note around and the next step probably the village will be involved to see if it's feasible because people have trouble dropping off books or picking things up quickly.
Okay, I have, that reminds me, I went to the book sale on Sunday, I think, or yeah, Sunday at the library. It was very well-attended. They were, I don't know how much money they actually raised, but they were happy with the turnout and it was a great event and you should continue to donate books to the library and patronize the library. Thank you. And if there's nothing else, is there a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting? Trustee Patino, second trustee Galen, all in favor? Meeting is hereby, use my, did you use this last time? Adjourned. Did you?
I don't remember, I think I did.